Hi, where you are?
Call the meeting in order. In signature folder, we had a couple of tents to cut, uh, one. Uh, veterans widow exemption, uh. It was a disabled veteran and I think that was it for a bunch of minutes, but uh. Make a motion to prove the manifest dated February eighth and the amount of four hundred and twenty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety cents.
Second.
Moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Most of that was the school, as you can guess.
Seems like it.
Make a motion to approve the board of selectmen work session minutes dated January twelfth.
Second.
Moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right? Make a motion to approve the work session minutes dated January eighteenth.
Second.
Moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Right?
Aye.
And make a motion to approve the selectmen's minutes of January twenty-second.
Second.
Moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Right? And make a motion to approve the work session minutes dated January twenty-ninth.
Second.
Moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Right? Right? And I make a motion to approve work session minutes dated February first.
Second.
Moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you can text Rebecca, um. In the mail folder, we had, uh. Something to do with the, the. Census and we look at revenue administration telling us the, uh. The sales ratio and stuff, the assess. Sixty percent of something. Yeah. That was the D R A and then the census. Seems like we just get over the census and they're already talking. It had your name on chalk, by the way, so you can just pass that off. Yeah, you had you as a contact person on.
Well, I'll get it.
Yeah, you get it corrected. Come right in, Rebecca.
I thought it could have come crappy in the backfield.
Yeah, all you got to do is knock on right hello.
I could have. I thought of it as halfway down the wall.
How they're going.
Okay.
Slow down.
Yeah, it did slow down.
Yeah.
I mean, expected it'd be quiet in December and January, but it's still kind of slow. We'll see. That's what the guitar work with it picks up.
Yeah, you had one solar ray and.
One.
One building permit.
Yeah, now I've got a tentative, tentative another building for Nutta Meadows, you know, we took it down.
Yeah.
Place down there, um, they preliminary inquiry, the subdivision that all finalized and everything, but she hasn't got her separate permit yet. So that was sort of. That came in.
Mm-hmm.
And yeah. That's about it.
And Bill's been already, you've been getting ahold of him to sign off on them.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Yeah.
That, uh, that works pretty smoothly. I put all the paperwork in David's office and he can send him an email, copy to David. That way David can alert him if he's taking the file somewhere or, you know, the, the application part of it out for good inspection or something. So that's, that's gone very smoothly.
Good.
He hasn't hung me up at all. And yeah, so.
Good.
Any other issues?
Any other issues? No, I got, uh, um, uh, the, the what's up that I, that I sent out that are on here. Um, uh. The, um, the one that I was mostly concerned about, um, the Champion Hill Road one, I haven't gotten a response. That wasn't a, that was an official letter. The other, the other ones I just sent emails to, just sort of a heads up kind of thing.
Which one exactly?
So.
Hmm?
So.
So that's a, that's forty-four Champion Hill Road. That's a, a multifamily.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And, uh, you know, absentee landlord. So it's very possible that the owner doesn't even know what's going on there. So. usual. This is what's happening on your property. You need to know that what, what's going on there is not allowed.
Any other two that you have response for?
No, I haven't, haven't, haven't.
No response at all.
No, no, they, so, but again, that just went out last week. I mean, I got back from. I was, I was away for two weeks and then a week of sort of catching up with what was on the ground.
Yeah.
Um, so.
So I have a question.
Sure.
There was a lengthy application packet from D E S. It was forwarded from D E S to the planning board. Did you receive that for a wetlands dredging on the backside of Province Lake?
I don't get those.
Quite an extensive package.
Yeah.
Had a cover photo of the structure of the house, um, and it's down in Remick Road.
Uh-huh.
So it did, uh, pose the question. I tried to go back and some of the reports that I have, um, so the picture of the structure was taken from the wing front.
Yep.
And you can actually see it from one fifty-three, well, at least I can, um, looking all the way back towards the campground from. The south side of the lake. I'm like, boy, that's an awful lot of zip board on the front of that building. And lo and behold, we get this packet from D E S and there's a picture of the structure and the whole front of it's covered with zip board. Um, so. At some point in time. They started remodeling that structure. So do you remember seeing the permits?
What address are we talking about? I mean, I've issued permits over the last ten years. I've issued permits all up and down Remick Road. So big ones and little ones and completely builds of structures and stuff like that. So, um. You know, I mean, it could, there's, there's one guy in there who I think he took down a little house and. Built probably the maximum amount that's allowed on that size lot, but he got all the permits for it.
The house just sold. I, I just didn't know if it would stand out. Unfortunately, I don't have it.
Yeah.
The George kept the packet, um.
Right, and.
And state work, but I didn't know if it would like stand out. The house just sold, believe it or not, on Province Lake for almost eight hundred thousand dollars, so.
Sometimes, it used to be sometimes that I got copies of the cover letters of those things. And I don't know whether it was just something that Gwen used to do as part of what came through the office, that there'd be, that there'd be a, a wetlands thing. Cause the, um. The, uh, the shoreline stuff, the shoreline side of it, there's a file in the town clerk's office where all the shoreline permits stuff are kept. Um, but it used to be that, that I would get copied just on a cover letter of those things. So I would know what was going on. It wouldn't have anything to do with a building. Building perimeter zoning permit application, but it would sort of put me in the loop and I'd, I'd at least be able to say, oh, yeah. I, I saw that. I know, I know the piece of property we're talking about, but I don't, I don't have any idea what piece of property it is. And otherwise I could, I could go and look and see, um, see what the status of it is. Um, so, and I don't cop, I don't get copied on what.
If there's zip board there, it must be a building permit.
Right, uh, yeah. Without knowing what piece of property we're talking about.
Yeah.
I mean, as I said, you know, the, the, the last, the last ten, twelve years, we've seen an enormous amount of development on that stretch of property. Of, of people taking those little, those little cottages and either just, you know, upgrading them a little bit. Or, or really turning them into little, little mansions that are just, you know, just barely squeezing onto the lot. And, uh, so it isn't like I, I could say, oh, well, there's only one that this has happened to. It's all up and down, up. Um, down, downward goes down into the wetlands and then up the other side at the far end, um, there's, there's. Two lots in there that have been just recently developed in the last five years with brand new structures. Um, and as I said, if you go down Remick Road and turn left, there's, um. The third or fourth house down, the guy just did this incredible. Remodel, two and a half stories and everything. We don't, you know, as long as it meets the height limit, we don't. We don't say anything about the square footage, number of floors. We just talk about the, the footprint. And the, and the height thing is, is pretty easy to meet because it's based on an average height of the highest and lowest roof, so. Not, not hard to stay within that.
I'm sorry, like, excuse me, as far as like the wetland, the dredging stuff, that's nothing you have to sign off on.
No, I don't sign off on that. I mean, the, 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 um. The planning board signs, uh, signs off on that and the state signs off on it because it's, it's shoreline. So it's, it's when it's they.
Doesn't follow your category.
Yeah, I mean, they have to follow, they, they have to follow, um, short state shoreline requirements for permits and stuff. But if it's actual dredge and fill, then, then the shoreline doesn't supersede necessarily the planning board. Um, the way the zoning ordinance is written is that for a certain amount of wetlands work. The, um, the Shoreland Protection Act takes precedent over the town stuff, which means that if someone gets shoreline, they don't have to go to the planning board. But I don't think that's true dredge and fill because dredge and fill is a, is a whole different category. Just, just the way excavation is falls under a completely different statute. Or a completely different section.
It was just, there was a, a bit of a discussion and attempted to educate and stuff.
Yeah.
Obviously for the conversation. So the, um, the bridge structure on one fifty-three just south of fire station. There was no permit for you for that either, right?
It sounds like it's a fire state.
Fifty-three across the South River. Doesn't really have a number, does it? I think it does, but it's.
Yes, rest, I'm saying the other side.
Oh, that, that bridge, um, that did go through me. They had, um, so that's the, that's the driveway bridge.
To access that property.
On the left that used to just be accessed by a footbridge.
Right, right.
Cause I remember giving them that permits for the new footbridge twenty, well, fifteen years ago when it got washed away. Um, yeah, I'm pretty sure that I did give a permit. For that after they showed that they had all the state permits in place.
And what would that permit consist of? Was it a driveway permit or was it?
Uh, it was probably a driveway permit. Yeah, I don't know.
That would have been done last year, right?
Yeah, yeah. I'm pretty sure, I don't think I've ever required.
Within last month's fall.
Permit for a bridge. And in that situation, I would think that if the state, all the state wetland stuff had been met. That, uh, I mean, I suppose someone could argue that I should have given the structure permit as well as the driveway permit, but. Probably the first time I've had, uh, had that come across my desk.
The bridge is asked, they assess great like that?
I would think it would be part of your property assessment and evaluation of your property, accessibility and things like that.
Right, but the driveway.
Maybe even if then the year before, it took them a long time to get the permits. Get everything together there.
Yeah, I don't remember the names. I'm thinking it was something kind of like Watson, but that.
You could, uh, fourteen permits out for driveway last year.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of driveway permits. Really, the only way I can, you know, track something down in my stuff is, is to identify the piece of property.
I went by.
Name or a lot, map and lot, or, or looking at the map and going, oh yeah, that's the one. And then I can identify and go back.
I went by there one day and it was stolen ground, bridge builder and state and some engineers, I think, were all there. And that was, it had to be last winter, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it could have been even before that.
So twenty twenty-two is when it may have started.
It could have been, it could have been twenty-two or early twenty twenty.
So you do want Rebecca to research and plan up to do that?
Yeah.
What do you want to find out?
Her physical, that was a permit, permitted that bridge needed a permit.
So we're gonna see if you issued a permit for it.
No, it's cracked open. Well, I know issue for the driveway.
Cause they're going to tear it down and build a house.
Oh, okay.
Oh, wonderful.
Well.
Look at a map probably ahead though.
Maybe it was you that told me that.
Um.
Just research on this. Lot number.
Yeah. Yeah, that's always helpful. I mean, yeah, sometimes I can pick up, I pick up on it right away. And other times, you know, I'm gonna just have to go off and do the digging, but if, if one of you has a concern about a piece of property. Having either the street address, the map and lot, or the property owner. Um, is, is really helpful. Cause otherwise I'm gonna have to dig for it. Um.
Look at it.
Yeah, so.
Understandable.
And the guy that built the bridge, he's going to build the snow road bridge. Let's say, yeah. In fact, I saw him the year, even before the snow. And he was headed over there and he wasn't even sure where he's going. So people wanted to put the bridge past wherever.
Uh-huh, okay. Well, I do remember the state application.
Probably twenty-two, twenty-two.
Yeah, I remember the, I remember the state application, um, and I remember, I have a pretty good memory of talking about, um.
It's a need for that.
Talking about it with, uh, someone, um, in terms of, you know, what was required at the town level. Uh.
There's a driveway permit.
But I'm thinking that it was just a driveway permit at that point.
Snap four eleven, lot two.
Thank you. Okay, well, I will look into it, um. You know, I could take up your time going through back data here, but it'd be quicker to go onto the computer and do the search.
Uh-huh.
Thank you, Chris.
I'm good.
And is a concern just, was there a driveway permit or did you want me to explore whether we thought the town was supposed to require? A zoning permit for a bridge?
Chris, he's the one that brought it up.
Okay.
Yes, whether or not there was a permit pulled and any permits that you had to issue for that.
For that property.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, state roads, some state. Yeah.
Yeah, the state did. I remember the state permit very well. Filled with, filled with detail, um, but I don't remember what else went around it other than. When they came to me, you know, my memory is that I gave them a driveway permit, um, but I don't remember anything else. And as I said, I don't. I think I would probably remember if I went, aha, you need a structure permit for. A driveway bridge. And I don't think so. I don't think that falls.
I don't think so here.
Given that the, I mean, given that they're already getting a permit, it's already in the record there.
Well, state manages that pretty much. I mean, I would raise one over waterway.
Yeah.
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 That's stretching it.
Yeah. Uh.
No degree, I don't agree.
So.
Uh. Thanks.
This is.
Forty-eight.
Was that the one off brothers?
Yeah.
Eighteen. Eight. Eight. Okay. Uh.
Why, why exactly? There's a lot of light adjustments. The two lots around Remick, so that.
Yeah, I remember that one. This wasn't it. I, I think these guys were just in touch with me. They're right at the corner. Um, you come down, you come down past the campground off Bonymon and then there's a sharp right where you run along. Between the river and, and Dow Remick's property. That's all wetland according to this map. And then you make a sharp turn to the left and I think this is like the second or third house in. And I have a feeling that they already contacted me because the name, Susan, it sounds familiar, but I'd have to go and look and. Um, see what I have. Thank you. I'm looking at both of those. What would you like me to do? I mean, we, you know, we can wait till the next month's report on something like that, that, that you guys have an inquiry about.
You'd say anything if, you know, if you have any permits or just if you should be an email or whatever, some renovations and just letting them know.
All right, sure, do you copy the other, if you don't, I'll, okay.
If you would mind.
Not having to do that. See what I find out.
If you wanna bring up this, to change the report or not. The wording is.
Yeah, yeah, some people put. Put exception in the fact we put down citizen complaint. In the script, in the report.
What do they want? We put down anonymous complaint?
Nothing, just, yeah, it's just complaining.
Well, I just wanted to clarify that it was something that showed up from the external, something that I picked up on my rounds. So that's all.
Some people had put exception to it.
People make exceptions a lot of the day.
I mean, in today's environment.
Yep, um. I was just.
You know, was that?
Definitely.
I am, thank you very much, yeah.
I was doing a quick look to see if I had gotten a call from Susan, because I, you remember a conversation, but anyway, I'll look and see what I found.
Thank you.
Yeah, nothing else. Okay.
Chief.
The stats appear if anybody wants to look at it. I might did something a little different and I actually pulled the yearly from last year, just so everybody can get an idea. I'll do those first if you'd like.
Okay.
In two thousand twenty-three, the Effingham Police Department and the Carroll County Sheriff's Department handled three thousand, four hundred and twenty-two calls for service here. In town, which resulted in forty-seven arrests, five hundred and ninety-four motor vehicle stops. There were thirty-nine motor vehicle accidents. And then since K nine Jesse and I were teamed up after school in September, she's been, she was deployed twenty-two times. Between September first and the end of December. So it's quite a.
She was busy.
Yeah, we were very busy the end of last year. And then rolling into this month, we're off to a really, really busy start. I actually, when I pulled the last year's stats. I think our calls for service in January were last year were two hundred and fourteen and two hundred and nineteen. And this year we're at three hundred and one calls for service in January. So we had quite a few calls for service, uh, two arrests this month or last month, excuse me, forty-six motor vehicle stops. Uh, three motor vehicle accidents and then the canine was deployed one time and it was for a drug sniff and it was on my own. Motor vehicle stop. And I'm actually gonna start breaking that down a little bit more for the deployments. That way everybody can see, you know, she was deployed for this, this and that. So. Just a little bit more transparency, just so everybody knows, because she's got so many different things that she can do. It just shows how much she utilized for each of those things every month. I mean, any questions? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, you have a good one. Appreciate it very much.
Good work.
Watch out.
Um. Leo, you got anything you want to talk about?
No.
No? Chris?
That was out of Holland today, the transfer station, um. Should take, um, about ten, uh. Can't remember, ten loads will, so get us there, so. Um. Mills was the, they matched the price and the haulings, the same distance, actually a little bit closer, so. Um, it's good material. I inspected the material on a day off, one day went into the pit down there. Um. And it's, it's good material, so. The next couple of days, they should have the sand built back up. Hopefully we don't need it. I'm hoping that this is a sign of an early spring. I just assume get more sleep as opposed to more money, so.
You believe the winter?
I don't, I don't believe that woodchuck. I think if you went home and you looked at the calendar and you counted the days, the six weeks of winter left regardless, so. Um.
Well, it's just January.
Yeah, I do know with the forecast coming up, uh, we need to have a conversation about. Um, the summer roads contract and making an appointment to get them in here, because I think that the dirt roads are gonna soften up. Particularly as you, uh, the aprons, when you come off in the. State road in particular, where there's a lot of salt, um, they get very rough and we're gonna have to address those at some point in time because it's gonna become. So impassable. Um, I know there's a couple of them already. You've got to kind of pick and choose your lane once you're traveling, so. Um, we're gonna have to really get going on that, um. Um, excuse me, Thursday evening or Thursday afternoon at three thirty, I'm meeting with another tree company on Pine River Road. Just to get, get another coat on the trees, uh, removal of the trees. Um. Yeah, that's all I have to address right now. Yeah.
Uh, Chuck, you want to talk about nothing?
Sure, can I ask one question, Chris, while we still have that subject of trees? My understanding was that Ospey owns right up to the edge of the pavement, which means trees are in Ospey.
They're not, that's not.
They're not.
The town of Ospey doesn't own that. That's the state of New Hampshire's land.
It was up to a certain point and not all the way up at the side of the road.
Yeah, state of New Hampshire's land. I've already contacted four property owners that need to give permission for us to. The only thing this town of Ospey has is an easement for the water and sewer line. That's it.
Okay.
The water and sewer line, if you're coming in from sixteen, you can see the marker right at the where the timeline crosses. You can see the orange and green, I'm excuse you, green and blue markers. The town of Ospey has an easement. Um, across those same four pieces of property, um, that I need to, needed to contact.
Um, that was a confusion of ease and one of the.
The easement is the town of Ospey. Everything else is private landowners. Um, the first piece of property in there, which was another muddied water thing. That landowner, which was Irving White Junior, um, his wife, his widow Sharon. Sharon, I think, sorry. Um, she has an easement through the state of New Hampshire because D O T or state of New Hampshire actually owns right up to Pine River Road. In front of her house. So she has an easement across their property to get to her home, so.
Yeah.
Um, because I had her on the list of five and that's a term though, I don't have to contact her at all because it doesn't affect her, but that is the, that's the, the easement is what made things confusing.
So. Good. A few years ago, we started looking into that. We thought we were gonna have someone else. Good. Um, I gave you a one pager.
Yeah.
Um, this is the last of the contractors for the two thousand twenty-four work at the, at the historic town hall library. This is for the global league windows, uh, northern sash and joinery. So, um, we ended up getting two bids. One's lower than this. The one lower than this had actually no information in it. Other than we'll build you the windows and here's our price, which scares me a little bit because it was all kinds of exclusions that said, but if we do this, 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 all add-on stuff. Um, this particular vendor reached out to me and said, not only I'll give you a price, but I really want to talk to the historic architect. And nail down what would be required as part of this project. And actually Leo and I did a Zoom call. With the contractor, with the historic architect, we spent like an hour and fifteen minutes on the phone defining what we needed to do. Um, I had a concern from initial discussion around a koia wood, which is the acidic, um, an acetate impregnated wood. And it touching the building and eating stuff. I mean, literally you have to install it with. Stainless steel screws. It eats everything else and you have to put barriers between the wood and the building otherwise it eats the building. And we were a little concerned at fifty to sixty feet up, not being able to inspect it, that that might be an issue. So now this is actually gonna be done in mahogany, um, rather than that wood. So it's going back more toward, um, the historic piece. The other thing we asked them to consider doing was putting in the equivalent of a storm window. So once they, they build the new buttons for the, the globally windows for the two pieces of, on the third floor. They'll actually build a storm on the front end of that. They'll come in behind the global league window. And then they're gonna mount that so that the moisture can free up with the wind and the rain and water will come down through it. So it's a bit of a. Unique design. It's toll custom. There's not, nothing like this. There's nothing to go by. So that was why that discussion with the. So that was why that discussion with the architect was really important. The lift rental may come down a little bit, if we can. If the timing of this installation coincides with what we're gonna do with the copper, um, roof leak, seam leak upon the in the Kubla, we may be able to forego the lift rental, so that's a possibility where the price could come down, but I I wanna approve the maximum in case, probably, you know, timing isn't such that the contractors can work it out. Um, and um, I'm also gonna reach out to the contractor and offer from a lodging standpoint to reduce some of the price, then he can basically uh, stay at my place for three, four days, he's gonna be working on this thing to get him in, he's just gonna be about a day per window, he has been um, with what he wants to do. So the price for that installation total, and, and the whole project is funded by Moose Blade Grant and L ship grant, so one of the twenty-five, twenty thousand dollar Moose Plate Grants in specific to the global league windows, that was the last year's grant. So this is covered by the grants a hundred percent. The price tag on it is thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. Um, and I'm recommending we go with Northwood Sash and Joinery for this work. Questions?
I'll make a motion to award Northwood Sash and Joinery, well, I am. Northwood Sash and Joinery, Buffalo, New York, for thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Chris, do you have a question? I can second it and then we'll discuss it, and it's just some, I, I must second the moment. There was a discussion in the manifest about this, does this have to do with this?
I meant, yes. Yeah, this was the.
Yeah.
Then we're gonna talk about.
We're going to talk about that.
Yeah, and it was one out of one.
Okay.
So you didn't in the manifest tonight, you did fifty percent of the amount.
Yeah.
Killing them in the.
Yeah. Right.
So, I mean, obviously, it's kind of late now, but I just learned this information over the weekend. Just for future reference, when we talk to these guys, just ask them, if you wouldn't mind, just ask them if they've ever worked with um, the wood from a jackfruit tree. So. I'm gonna try to make this fast, Mr. Chairman. So I went to the grocery, went to the grocery store, went to the grocery store with my grandson on Saturday. And there was an approximate thirty-pound fruit at the Hannaford and Conwy, this big, this big, a green hokey thing, and it was huge, it was awesome. So I wound up researching, and it's called the jackfruit. And uh, India is one of the locations where they are, Indonesia, places like that. These things grow a couple hundred of these jackfruits that are giant on this tree, you definitely wanna be wearing a hard hat, hard hat, but. So they said architects use the wood from a jackfruit tree for historic projects, and I was like. So it says that it's the new replacement, and it was in parentheses, and it could be a new replacement for mahogany. But it's called the jackfruit tree.
Yeah, okay.
Which is very strong, because if you could, if you like research this and you look at the jackfruit tree and you see these thirty, forty, I mean, they, they range from softball size to thirty-six to thirty-eight inches in length and range anywhere between five pounds and seventy-five pounds or something. With a couple hundred of these on them, it's like, that's a strong tree.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we can actually still take a look at that, where, I mean, where, we've got, this is the proposal. But he's gonna do some shop drawings for us and get specifics with it. And if, if we, and I'll do some homework on this and send it to him. And there's some good comparison capabilities out there around for the different types of wood and the rot resistant capabilities of it. One of the things I was not aware, because I always thought mahogany was like, I was thinking sliced bread. It used to be, if it's original hard growth.
Old growth.
Old growth, they grow it on the plantations now. The plantation is not as good as it was anymore, and that's one of the reasons the Akoya, the Akoya is being used in Europe extensively. And it's just coming to the States where it's kind of new, that was my apprehension on it. Not being able to watch it.
Yeah.
Um, but I can look into this, and I can actually put this out to him and he can research it and it comes back where this be a better fit than what he's looking at with this mahogany, we can have that discussion.
Yeah, it says a superior, a superior to uh, teak, teak wood, very compatible to teak.
Okay.
Which teak is very good wood.
Yep.
Termite resistance, all that. Electric doors, windows, roof construction.
I'll, I'll reach out and ask it, there's no, no reason why we can't, he hasn't started tucking anything, yeah, so.
Oh, we got plenty of time.
Yeah. Good. Any other questions?
Yeah, we're ready.
Yeah, if you want to move. Okay, I'll pay them.
Thank you.
And then the manifest question, that wasn't per se, that was just to clarify.
Right.
To make sure it got posted the right place, right?
Yeah, yeah, did you audit?
Yes.
Yeah, cloud type.
That, that is a grant. So, they have, they haven't listed, or they should have listed, because I sent it to them.
Where, what's it listed on?
It should be twenty twenty-three C D F A grant under the seven thousand grant line. To me.
It's unlisted.
I won't follow up.
Twenty twenty-three.
I won't follow up. It should be listed as a separate grant item.
So what's it called?
C D F A grant.
C D F?
C D F A, Community Development.
And it covered the seventy-five percent?
Covers seventy-five percent of it.
From the other twenty-five.
Thirteen hundred comes out. It's a thirty-nine hundred dollar grant.
Yeah, 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 I know, um.
The other thirteen hundred will come out of.
Which category?
D P S, D P S checkbook, it's a grant, it's all, it's all grant. Doesn't go anything, it doesn't go above the seven thousand line at all, stays everything.
So it goes into the H, it comes out of H D H preservation.
Correct. So when, when we do the accounting part of it, thirteen hundred will go into the E P S.
Correct.
Line item underneath that, then that will go against the C D F A grant, and they'll wash out zero to zero.
Hey, but she didn't do that, right?
Yeah, no, she put it on the, uh. Building maintenance or something.
Did we get the bill with, did the C D F A bill come in?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, did, okay, yeah, I didn't realize it came in, okay.
That's what we're asking.
Okay, good, nope. All right, we'll work on that this week.
Yeah, she had thirteen hundred tax, the building, building maintenance or expenses.
The job to pull it out.
Nope, yeah, it's not in, it's not in the grant.
That's what I was, I was questioning.
I won't work on that. I didn't realize it came in, I knew it was coming, I just didn't realize it came in.
Manifest. All right, um. Website proposal. Yeah.
All right, so last Wednesday, Wednesday, I met with TownCloud, they are a website company. They previously had conversations with the previous town administrator, they reached out to me and I completed a demo. They have two applications, they have the website and they have an agenda side. So they showed me both of those, um, I was very pleased. The website itself, very easy to navigate compared to the website we have now. Um, pretty much, if you wanted to look for something specific in minutes, you could go on, you could search one word. And it pulls up every set of minutes that contains that word. And you could look and see, you know, this is the date I want, um. I really like the idea that it's easier to navigate, the agendas are right on the homepage set with the date instead of, for example, the board of selectmen, you'll see the date and time on the side, and then you have to navigate each page to go and find the agenda minutes. Everything is right there, right on the homepage. If you ever wanted to look at an example, Middleton, New Hampshire has TownCloud, um. Takes about three to four weeks, if you guys were to approve it tonight, it takes three to four weeks to have the website up and running. Um, if we pay forward for three years, we skip out on the setup fee, I believe it was three hundred and fifty dollars. That gets wiped out, we get a thirty percent discount, and it's thirty-seven, thirty-seven fifty-four for three years. And that's including both the agenda side where I create the agendas and minutes and the website.
You went on Middleton, sorry.
Yeah, it was, yeah, that's right. So you, when you do create your agenda and minutes, that would be automatically.
Website, so I won't have to go onto the website and navigate five different things just to get the agenda on. And as soon as I go ahead and hit publish, it's already on the site.
Where would the.
On homepage.
Thirty-seven fifty-four come out of computer?
If you look at forty-one, thirty.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I know, um, forty-one thirty, we have a website and three for a salary.
Oh, yeah.
Obviously. Um, but that right there does have, I remember what it was last time. Has thirty-nine fifty-six remaining and I have.
Right. So we wouldn't have to utilize a pre-said anymore on this.
Correct, because that would be the only admin if I were to sign, if we were to go through with it.
What's the annual hosting when you buy your three-year deal?
So when you can find a three-year deal, um, I haven't remembered. They could do different things. I do get a monthly fee, I don't know what it would be annually, I could definitely ask them, they're responsive. Um, so you get, you pay for each admin, so I went based off one admin, which would be myself. Um, the website is a hundred dollars a month and fifty dollars a month for that. Um, I don't know what the deal would be if you pay yearly, every year, but that would be what the price would be every month. After the three-year deal, but it would be signed in for three years.
Is there a, um, I only charge them to do additional work later on? Let's say, um, if you wanna make a change, what does it go to, to a style, not a date?
Not, they said to me, they said, you know, pretty much with this price, um, I can contact them anytime if I ever were to have a question. Um, no fee. If I had a question, so. All right, I'll.
You're aware of it all.
Yeah, nope, I have that.
Yeah, same company that.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a beautiful site.
Yeah.
But it also is very, when they were showing me everything, it seemed very easy to do everything. So I'd say it's also very limiting questions, but you never know if someone else needed to do something on it, and it's good to ask that, and I guess.
So you wanna agree that I'm based on additional energy, approve it tonight, then what? But she does back additional information or something, not more. Put it on hold.
I'm gonna ask somebody that's not confused or whatever.
I'm just, I'm just going forward, so you can start impli- implementing the, the site onto our system, onto.
So, um, at, at the phase right now with the information we have, any further questions? It would be eighteen hundred dollars a year past the three years, unless there's additional.
Unless they do like it just comes to pay a whole year, but they never mentioned that to me. When I ask about this, any subscription, I can, I want you to put for a year.
But again, thirty percent reduction, so.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't want to delay it too long, but I'd like to have all the information for, I mean, it's kind of like, you know. Credit cards, changing from spectrum to dish network and, you know, your fee. Everything's free or it's reduced rate, and then after this, it's you pay on the line next year, and you're switching back. Um, I'm not saying that that would happen here, but, you know, before I.
But first, they did, they had a capability to say if you do anything by the month. If you did the upfront three years, here's what it would be, and then the ongoing beyond that, so they they had the capability and they were willing to do a side by side, did you show us what the prices was when they, no, they talked to us way back.
Let's make sure they didn't say anything on the email to me.
They wouldn't burn hold too, she gets info.
I'm good with either, I can, I can reach out to them.
I mean, at this point.
Responsive, so I feel will have it by, you know, next meeting or.
Okay, you want, yeah.
It would have, I mean, it would have to be pretty drastic additional costs on top of that, because you're talking eighteen hundred dollars a year past the three years. As it's proposed right now, so that's less than half of what we are paying, so they'll definitely give us wiggle room. I wouldn't wanna have to get into that, but.
Yeah, we can wait till you come back.
Yeah, I'll reach out to him tomorrow, um, because I never knew that, so I appreciate you telling me that, because you never said anything.
And obviously, we have to have a discussion about that line, I don't know, what's currently happening. Not blind side, anybody, I don't think that's, that is.
Well, blow the line out, I mean, once we pay.
Right, right.
But have you seen the contract?
Teresa, I'll be you.
That's what I mean, I didn't think that, you know, it's fair, it's just a blind title. Make it work tonight, without giving.
She already, it's, she won't take it over, trying to.
Oh.
Yeah, she knows already.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, Teresa's aware of it.
And it may be worth, they go to the contract too, just these things, surprising inside that.
Did they send you a contract?
No. But I'm gonna ask someone about when it's in the.
Okay.
We definitely go to your point, I mean, I would.
Well, yeah, like I said, Chuck, when Chuck invented that, they never mentioned that to me, so I'd rather figure that out first, because, you know, if there's additional charge.
One more request, change the voice now.
I'll tell you this, I can change, I can change my voicemail, but I don't know what I did after I changed it, because now my direct line says no one's monitoring this, so that's a project that I gotta figure out. But I will, I promise, once I figure it out.
I, I think there's an eight-hundred number over to. DCI, they will actually.
There, there is, and I called it once before and I didn't ask at the time, I was focused on something else, but I will call them.
Put you up my back when I hear that.
Is there anything else that she? H B thing?
Yeah, what do you wanna do about H B? I'm sure we can find an extra funds or. Get the budget here and tomorrow night we can increase it by three thousand.
You make that motion tomorrow night. You've put a lot of work into this, in what I.
We got, yeah.
It's solid waste, uh.
I'm sure we can come up with.
The monitoring and all that stuff, we have a budget of thirteen thousand, they're, they're coming in with eighteen thousand one hundred.
It's just a fifth year, we have to do the extra task for the state. Every four or five years, we have to do extra testing with state within, I think we only have to do a thousand foot radius this time.
Yeah.
Every four or five years, we have to do that testing.
Yeah, they.
That we, the first time around, we had to do two thousand foot radius, but because our results came back so good, they reduced it to one thousand feet. But that's, that's an every, I think it's every four years, every five year requirement. And those tests are like seven hundred bucks a household.
Yeah, and there's only, uh, there's only two on the list. Actually, there's only one. Be the one right next to the, the river, right? Stoner. You're closest.
There was one north of the bridge, showed up with.
Oh, really? Yeah.
One north of the bridge showed up with some results, it was a hand-dug well.
Yes, uh, under the management zone property list, there's only, um five listed and four of them are vacant property. So the only one that's got wells, area gray stones. So it must be the five hundred feet one.
So there's a requirement by the state. And I think it, either this year, next year, whatever, that we, we, within a thousand feet of the transfer station piece, all the wells have to re, be retest, be retested. All the households that have drinking water. And I didn't know if that was this year.
The last P pass testing, they were done in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, so five years, we next year, twenty twenty-five, probably.
But it's worth asking that one, because that one, everything will bump up, because the test is so expensive for a household.
Right, so it makes me wonder why this one is, you know. Five thousand dollars more than what we were anticipating, when we cut the budget, and we did increase it by a thousand bucks, so.
The state did increase some additional testing requirements under P pass, but I don't know if it's affected in what they're doing there.
Can we table this, until we get some information, come? You don't need to pay this right away.
Definitely ask the question.
Yeah, no, good, questions have to be asked, I would say we need to ask. Well, so I already emailed them that, that I've already reached out to them for, to update the names. Um, they didn't respond to me yet on that, but I think I sent that this morning.
What we take? What you want, no? You okay with it, Chris?
Yes.
Yeah, what you feel, you're part of the group until either in March.
I don't wanna get too far into that. I don't, I don't want Tyler coming to my house looking for paperwork.
My driveway's too long, he will be up.
Yeah, I mean, they, they say they expect it to be fixed out, maybe, they might be there.
Yeah, just like a lawyer.
Meeting in two weeks, we'll have a public hearing. You didn't put a time down, you gonna do it at five o'clock?
Yeah, it's at five o'clock, I, so, Pierre said that, I don't think I wrote down this, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay. Except, uh, I would lock grant from the amount of sixteen thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-six cents. Oh, it'll be on the twentieth.
See, one of these phases is not, it's not estimate completion is March of next year.
For your five years.
Right, but if they don't complete that. Until March, I wonder if that includes the lab, so if they take the samples. If we don't get the lab fees back, our books will be closed. So I'm wondering what that's gonna do with this. Because that right there is seventy-six hundred dollars with thirty-five hundred dollars in lab fees. So that's almost our whole, what we were estimating for the budget, and that's not even gonna, that's estimated that we completed in March of twenty-five.
We'll be, do the whole thing, pipe down, no, if there was budget.
Unless that took place, because it says that, uh. Like the lab fee will be built directly, uh, as a direct expense. So, I mean, if they didn't complete that until March twenty-five, we wouldn't get that bill until March twenty-five. Which our books will be closed for twenty-four, so it can't be posted to, as a twenty-four expense.
But we should have an understanding of, you know, what, what's gonna.
Yeah, so I'd like to know what that, what that means, you know, what that's, what that actually does, as far as like the budgetary thing, you know what I mean, and that's, like I said, that's.
And like what Chuck said, it, we're supposed to do all wells.
That's, that's why I have to, in the detail, of when the timing of the stuff is important.
Right.
And what's involved, why the difference in the prices?
And that's the one, uh, thousand, well, eleven thousand one hundred dollars for there, that. Is twenty twenty-five, so.
Remember the first time we did it, they actually came out, and they, they went to everybody's house with a notification. There were a bunch of people that weren't home, they had rescheduled stuff coming back a few weeks, and some people were even beyond that another few weeks. So they weren't able to collect the samples on the timely basis.
Oh, okay. Start a whole conflict or something like that. It was this guy.
Yeah, in the first touch, it was thousand foot radius, and then they didn't find any contamination in the wells. So then they cut it back to five hundred feet. And I think the only contamination was a well at the transfer station itself.
Number two.
Which they don't even drink the water anyway, because of the. Stuff in it. Anything else? Either one of you?
I, all I can say is that, uh, with a road contract, Elliot, doing a damn good job on the roads. Pushing that snow back, that's all, it's nice.
Non-public. Better be civil.
Okay, I'll, I'll start with the question, you know, we're already gonna answer, I ask. All the records back. In town.
Health officers said that, uh, we had everything that needed.
Okay.
Yeah, it's good.
I'll give it a police department.
Thank you, Tom.
Anybody had anything else? Okay, we do have a request for a non-public. We'll do that, and nothing else after that. So, um, make a motion to go in the non-public, and there, I say ninety-one, eight, three, two, C, we go.
Second.
Moved in second at all, the paper?
All right, Seaman's eye.